The following is a local resident producer's program. The program content is the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Access Television, the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Cable Television Advisory Commission, or Time Warner Cable.
One, welcome to another edition of I on Oshkosh. I'm Cheryl Lance along with my co-host Tony Palmary. Getting everything screwed up right off the bat, that's not a good way to start. Anyway, this evening we are interviewing four candidates for local offices. Three of them will be running for the Oshkosh Common Council. The fourth, later on in the show, is running for school board. And so, we're very happy to be joined by each of the guests. Unfortunately, because there are so many candidates running, which is a good thing, and we applaud that, we only have about 13 minutes to spend with each guest. And if they make it through the primary, then those who do, we will be spending more time with them at a later date. The first guest we're very pleased to welcome to the show is Kent Monti. This is Kent's first run for public office here in the Oshkosh area. And welcome to the show Kent, we're pleased to have you here.
Thank you Cheryl.
Why don't we start out by you telling us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for the council?
Well, I live over on the west side. I have a wife, four children. I work for the Department of Defense. I'm a government inspector at Oshkosh Truck. So, I've lived in Oshkosh probably about three and a half, four years. I moved here from the valley. I relocated to the valley after spending eight and a half years in the Army. I'm medically retired after being diagnosed with Crohn's disease. I'm just, the way things have been going in the city, I felt the need to just kind of throw my hat in the ring, get my issues out there.
Talk about that a little bit more Kent. First of all, nice to meet you by the way.
Oh, nice to meet you too.
Yes, and what's going on in the city that makes you want to run for office?
Well, since I moved here in 2002, my taxes started out being about $2,300 a year, give or take. And my last tax bill last month was $3,100. After the reassessment and the changes in the mill rates, I saw an $800 jump in my taxes. And then on top of that last month, the current council voted in a garbage fee. Taking that off the tax rolls and adding the fee onto the taxpayers, stuff like that could have been avoided. Even some of the councillors themselves admitted that the garbage trucks, which were left in the operating budget, they're buying two of them this year, could have been moved into the capital improvements budget. And that money could have been used to avoid this fee. And what I want, what my goal is, is to try and prevent that from happening and more fees on top of that. Because there's been a statewide tax freeze, which doesn't allow the city to raise our taxes anymore, yet the city wants to continue to spend money hand over fist. I'm sure we're going to be talking about that later.
Yeah, absolutely. Why don't we talk about one of those right now? The Five Rivers Resort. Now, this is a, you know, multi-million dollar proposal that is being suggested for along the Fox River. I think we can all at this table probably agree that something needs to be done and we need economic development in the community. What are your feelings about the way this project is being done so far? And what I mean by that Kent, is the types of questions that have been asked, the types of information or lack thereof that has been forthcoming, and some of the news that we just found out this morning, which we're taping this on the 19th of January, where they don't even, the developer doesn't even have their financing in place yet.
Correct. This project is more zeros than I'll ever seen in a lifetime. And I don't know exactly why the city wants to get involved in real estate the way they are. The city's talking about fronting more than six million, I think the number's $6.7 million, right up front to this developer that doesn't even know if he can come up with the rest of his financing. His deadline has come and gone and he cannot prove any hard figures on whether he can come up with the remainder of the money to complete this development. In addition to the six and a half million dollars, they're also proposing nine point something million dollars in TIF. So it brings the total up to $15 million that the taxpayers could be stuck footing the bill. And we're looking at stuff like the Park Plaza that just took place this week. City is standing to lose well in excess of half a million dollars on that venture, you know, in taxes and utilities that will probably never get paid. Do we really want to put forth $6 million on this type of a venture? I don't think it's a good idea.
Are you saying Kent, that it's time to pull the plug on Five Rivers?
Yes, yes.
Well, you are.
Yes.
Tell the developer, go home.
Yes. If he couldn't have come up with, he had several months to come up with his financing and from the looks of it, it's shaky at best, what he's got. He doesn't, it doesn't look like he's going to be able to come up with the rest of the money. Do we really want to spend a whole lot more time on it? Five Rivers is a good idea, don't get me wrong, but we need to get a developer in there that can actually back up what he's saying. And I don't know that this one can.
Do you feel that there are ever times Kent, when public partner private, public-private partnerships are a good idea?
In some cases, yes, but it's got to be the right partnership. You can't just do that with any entity. If, and you know, there are a lot of resort companies out there that would be more than willing to build resorts in places that they feel would be profitable for them. And for this developer to come in here and want to develop here, but I'll only do it if I can get so many million dollars from the city in order to do this, I'd question that.
Okay.
You talked about the garbage fee, which you're against. My understanding is it goes into effect the last three months of 2006, is that correct?
It starts in October, I believe.
And a person would get elected in April, correct? If you got elected, would you move to repeal that fee?
Yes.
And then what would we do for the funding? What would we do?
Well, there are several things that could be done with the funding. One, there are things that the city's spending money on that really aren't needed right now that could wait. Floating docks. And I've been talking about that right since the beginning of my candidacy is those floating docks. That's $284,000. Nobody really can specify whether that grant money that was to be used for 50% of that venture will be available next year or not. Some say it will, some say it won't. I don't know, but I think those docks could wait.
All right.
I mean, there are more important things than that type of stuff.
Speaking of docks, or let's talk about a pier. The Outer Street Fishing Club was able to get approval to put a pier in Menominee Park. The neighbors in that area are against it. It's currently in appeal, I believe. There will be a hearing, I think the DNR will have a hearing.
Right, yes.
What is Kent Monti's view on that pier? Should it be there?
I like the pier. I like the fact that Outer Street is donating the funds to build a pier. I don't know that that's a really good location for it. I've had the opportunity to go down there and look at the area. The potential problems I see down the road are parking.
Oh yeah.
Bathroom facilities, you know, these are all things that we need to think about. Outer Street is donating this pier for the children and handicapped of the community. They're putting up a pier that does not have any railings or anything to keep the kids... Speaking as a parent, I wouldn't let my children out 100 feet out in the Miller's Bay without railings.
Sure.
You know, granted, the water's only, what, four feet deep out there, but you know, a child that doesn't know how to swim isn't going to realize stand-up.
What about the process that was used to get the approval of that pier? How did you feel about the process?
I wasn't really involved in the process, or I didn't really...
Well, the Parks Board approved it on a Monday.
That I don't agree with.
The city council approved it on a Tuesday. So, do you feel as a city council member, you'd have to make some changes in that?
Yes, that was rammed through. I don't think that should have taken place. I think that the community should have been given a couple weeks to digest the thought of having that pier there.
Sure.
And giving them a chance to come out and speak against it if they chose to, or speak for it if they chose to do that.
All right, sure.
Well, along with that, you know, Councilman Brian Bain, who also serves on the Parks Board, went to them and said, you know, that he would like to see some changes in when they have their meetings, so that ramming through can't happen again with future issues. He was basically poo-pooed. Now, when Brian was on this show, he talked about, you know, still bringing forth some kind of a change. There's a lot of talk on the council about, you know, things like that. Doing studies for efficiency, finding out how parks, neighbors get notified about projects, but those things are never followed through on. What would you do if you were on the council to see that those things are not just talked about, but actually followed through on?
Well, when a resolution comes up in front of the council, the council does have the option to put off that resolution to the next meeting, so that it can have time to be discussed and an open forum take place. And I don't know why it didn't happen in this case, but I have to agree with Councilman Bain that there should have been more time. And in the future, the time needs to be taken.
Do you think there needs to be a formal type of notification process put in place so that if there's going to be a project done in a park, the neighbors of that park are duly notified and in ample enough time to speak out or for an issue?
Well, yes, but in order to do that, it will cost money. You know, I'm kind of a frugal person. I'm raising four kids on a single income, it's kind of my nature, but there is, if there was just two weeks, you know, instead of doing it the very next night, you know, give the two weeks, the city manager puts out a newsletter that's available on the web. It's available through Miles' website and in addition to the city website, that would detail what's on each agenda for a council meeting. And that way, the public would have a chance that they could, they could just keep an eye on those newsletters and show up for a city council meeting and speak out against it. So, I think there is something in place for it.
Okay, all right. I was actually talking about notifying neighbors, but we'll talk about that next time. Why don't you very quickly look into camera three, tell folks why they should vote for Kent Monti on February 21st?
I want to be the voice of the taxpayer. I'm here, I want to be a representative of the taxpayers of Oshkosh. I need to be a voice for the city of Oshkosh on the council. I believe that I can make a difference and I believe that we can make a difference together.
Okay, very good. Thanks so much. It was a pleasure meeting you and good luck in the primary. We're going to take a short break. When we come back, we'll be joined by Mike Donkey, who's also running for the city council. We'll be right back.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across, border.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in forced labor camps.
If I stay in Cambodia, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write. Your dad? You speak Jemai? Your dad?
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing. No money, no English.
America stood for freedom, it stands for freedom, and that's what all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-for-a-child. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her healthcare costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, healthcare referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Welcome back to another section here of I on Oshkosh. We're talking right now with Mike Donkey. This is his second run for Oshkosh Common Council. He ran last year. Mike, welcome to the show.
Thank you.
You're also a volunteer on this show, but I will say in the interest of full disclosure that Mike has not talked with us about the questions beforehand. We wouldn't have given them to him even if he had asked nicely. And he did not sit in any area where he could hear the questions with our prior guests. So, just thought I'd put that out there so that there are no questions raised. So, Mike, welcome to the show again and, you know, tell us why you're running for city council a second time around and a little bit about yourself.
Last year was a pretty positive experience, yes, running. Gave me a little bit more insight to the city and I, over the year, I've gained a little bit more experience and knowledge of all the city council runs and stuff. I've lived in Oshkosh for 11, 12 years now. I've married, have a wife, two small children, and just want to kind of take part in shaping the city's future.
And you work for the state, right?
I worked for State Department Corrections for 15 years.
All right. What do you see wrong, if anything, with the way, the shape of our city has been going so far?
I think sometimes some of the council members will go into the council meetings and they have their mind made up already. They don't want to listen to the citizens that are there, and I don't know that they solicit and really listen to the ideas that are given to them, possibly by the citizens before the meetings. I think they kind of have an agenda already.
Okay. And I have to say in the interest of full disclosure, that I had Mike's yard sign in my lawn last time and thankfully, he doesn't blame me for why he didn't.
Well, I circulated papers for him. I don't know if I did last year.
You mentioned that Tony. You don't hold me responsible there. But the Five Rivers Resort project is back in the news. Many of us, myself included, thought it was a done deal. But today as we're taping, January 19th, we find out that the developer has not gotten his financing approved yet. What is your view on what should happen with that Five Rivers at this point?
Well, I wish the public could have a little bit more knowledge of what is going on to begin with, instead of reading in the paper that Jackson Kinney says this, well, the councilor members thought this. I don't, I don't know if people are just un-informed, they don't really ask the questions, or what the facts are behind it.
Would you have not, would you have not voted for it a few months ago if you'd been on the council?
At the time, I was very concerned, I still am, at use of the TIF and bringing that in are a risk of the city. To me, it's kind of a pyramid-type scheme and once it hits a certain point, the value is going to be gone and the risk to the city if something happens here. And obviously, if they aren't getting financing, there must be concerns on the financial realms of...
Would you go as far as to say it's time to pull the plug on this project?
I would want to say that, yes, but I have a little difficulty not knowing, like I say, we don't, we don't really know everything.
Okay.
But I have a lot of difficulty with it.
If he doesn't have his financing in place by the end of January, would then it be time to pull the plug?
My understanding when I read in the paper today is council members thought it was going to be there by January 16th.
They did.
And if it's not there, I think it's time to seriously look at it and possibly pull the plug.
Well, and they had that idea based upon an August, or rather, an October 6th memo from Community Development Director, Jackson Kinney, stating, I mean, it was basically a self-imposed-type deadline by him. And now it wasn't met. The council apparently though, is willing to grant him a little bit more time. Do you think that there's a reasonable amount of little more time?
I think like Tony said, I mean, you know, you're talking 15 more days and we've been working on this. This project's been in the works for quite some time now and I think if, within 15 days, you can't come up with something, it's time to seriously reevaluate your position.
Okay.
Garbage fees. You know, the common council, as you're well aware, has recently approved a budget that included pulling the garbage fees, or basically garbage removal off the tax roll. And we will now be having a separate bill that we have to pay to the tune of $120 a year to have our trash picked up, starting in October of this year. How does Mike Donkey feel about that?
Well, I said it last year when I ran, I'm not really for fees. I think we could have found some money in the budget. You know, without getting right into the details of the budget, where would it exactly came from? I mean, there was ideas some of the council members had out there, but I think there's money in the budget that could have been pulled out to avoid these fees. My concern is, this year was, I believe, $660,000 in revenue the fees would generate. In 2007, you can, what, four times that amount, a little over $2 million approximately, you're going to generate. Where's the rest of the money going to go? I mean, we've set a fee now, where are we going to do with that money?
Okay.
Well, the fee goes into place, my understanding is the last three months of 2006. If you get elected, you're elected in April. Would you move to repeal that fee?
I would definitely consider doing that, yes, I would. I'll say I will.
All right, and if we repeal that fee, then what do we, what do we replace it with?
You know, I, there's some different avenues going, I know, for the garbage pickup and the fees and, you know, like use fees and stuff like that. And that could even be something you look at, but then you're in a fee situation too. I think we need to find the money to put into the budget and avoid having the fees, period.
Okay.
Because every year, we come up with one or two more fees for everybody.
All right.
Would you have been in favor, had you been on the council when this budget was approved, of pulling the garbage trucks out of the operating budget and moving those two trucks into the capital improvements plan? And that would have freed up the money so that this fee would not have had to go into place?
Yeah, I would have been in favor of that. I mean, the trucks are going to last you 10 years. And even if, you know, I know there was concern about one, are the automated trucks and stuff like that, and then we wouldn't need these, but I mean, it was said that we could still use those trucks.
Absolutely, absolutely. The Outer Street Fishing Club, as you know, Mike, donated a pier for Miller's Bay. It got approved on a Monday night by the Parks Commission. The common council approved it the next night. A couple of different questions on this. Number one, do you support placing the pier in that Miller's Bay location? It's currently in appeal right now with the DNR.
Yeah, you know, I guess if there was a little bit more neighborhood input and community or neighborhood notification, and some of the citizens wouldn't have spoke out as much against it. I'm wondering if there's not a better area to put it for, or put it into. You know, Terry Shore's brought up some points of, you know, wind damage to the pier and stuff like that from the winter. I'm not a pier expert, I'm sure somebody out there is, but that maybe there is a better place for it. And I know there's the concerns of the handicap access to it, that it's not there. If we're going to have the pier, I would like, and it's for the kids, and it's going to be handy for that people, I'd like to be able to see them use it.
Okay, what about the process, Mike? Everyone pretty much agrees that having something approved at a commission on a Monday and then rubber stamped by the council on a Tuesday is not good public policy.
No.
So, what would Mike Donkey do to assure that this doesn't happen again?
I think Brian Bain was at least on the right avenue. I don't know if he's going to follow through with it to at least go out there and try to change the meeting dates and look at some, it's not only the Parks Board, but maybe look at all the boards and make sure we don't ever have another situation like this. Try to, you know, I mean, right now, we're being reactive rather than proactive. Let's be proactive and fix the problem before we have more situations like that.
Well, you know, Mike, you brought up that Brian Bain had tried to change the meeting date of the Parks Commission, so that it wasn't the day before the council meeting, so that something like this wouldn't happen again, and that basically got shot down. So, he is going to, he said when he was on this show, do something different to sort of remedy that. We've not seen anything to date. Other things that have been discussed at the council have been doing an efficiency-type study. We've not seen anything like that to date. Mrs. Shireman, with respect to this notification, asked what we could do to have a formal notification process in place, so that it's not just hit and miss with neighbors being notified. That hasn't happened, and I don't see these council members, at least to date, I have not seen them bringing anything back to say, hey, what about this? What about this and what about this? If you were on the council, what would Mike Donkey do to help ensure that these types of issues aren't just lip service, that they're actually followed through on?
Well, I think one big thing is you've got to hold the city staff, like Tom Stefani, who is, you know, head of the Parks Department. You need to hold him a little bit responsible. Maybe if there's not guidelines out there for them, establish guidelines for him that, you know, so we don't have community versus neighborhood versus all these different types of parks that he was bringing up. Let's establish guidelines for our process and, you know, hold people accountable to it.
Okay, different topic. Leach Amphitheater, should there be a surcharge on the tickets? And if so, how much?
I believe there should be a surcharge. The user should, should pay something for using it. I mean, not everybody in the city of Oshkosh uses it. There's a lot of talk about building storage sheds and I know some, some of the local organizations want to put money into pavilions and build shelters along there. But there's always the upkeep and I think the people using it should pay for it and at the same time...
How much, 50 cents, dollar?
50 cents. I think 50 cents is a fair price. And if things aren't going, I mean, then you raise it.
Did you think the council was irresponsible in not putting a surcharge on?
Yeah, and I, actually, I thought somebody, they would pass it with 50 cents, but, you know, start on a dollar, I thought, well, 50 cents is a bargain.
Well, if there were to be a fee in place, a facility fee in place, where would you recommend or be comfortable with that money going? Staying in City Hall and City Hall being responsible for the administration of that money? Or over to the, you know, the, I'm spacing out my name, the foundation? The Oshkosh Area Community Foundation?
I guess I'd be comfortable either way.
Okay.
I probably would like to actually take it out of the hands of the city, kind of in a way.
Okay.
And put it with the foundation. They've done a lot for the city and they manage the money.
Okay. We're almost out of time, Mike, so why don't you look into camera three and take about 30 seconds to tell folks why they should vote for Mike Donkey on Tuesday, February 21st?
My name's Mike Donkey. I'd like to be a candidate, I'm actually a candidate for the city council. I'd like to be your candidate, I guess I could say, to help shape the future of Oshkosh and play a part in making Oshkosh a wonderful place to live. I would surely appreciate your vote. I encourage anybody to contact me if you have any questions about any of my stances or any concerns about my stances. List in the phone book, my phone number's 232-5401. Otherwise, you can look on Cheryl's website and I have a candidacy statement on there and my email's on there also.
Okay, very good. Mike, thanks very much. We're going to take a quick break. When we come back, we'll be joined by Michelle Bogdan. We'll be right back.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across, border.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in forced labor camps.
If I stay in Cambodia, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write. Your dad? You speak Jemai? Your dad?
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing. No money, no English.
America stood for freedom, it stands for freedom, and that's what all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-for-a-child. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her healthcare costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, health care referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Hi, welcome back to ION Oshkosh. I'm Cheryl Hens, Tony Palmieri, and now we're joined by Michelle Bogdan. Michelle is running for the Oshkosh Common Council. This is her first foray into local politics, I guess, is it not?
Correct.
All right, well, congratulations on being a candidate in the primary, and thanks very much for being here. We appreciate you coming on. Why don't you tell us a little bit about Michelle? Oh, Tony, you wanted to give a little statement of disclosure.
Yeah, in interest of full disclosure, Michelle's a UW-Oshkosh student, and I've been giving her advice in her campaign. She's with the Wisconsin Public Interest Research Group, so a group that I've been supportive of in the past, so just in interest of full disclosure, you know that, Cheryl?
All right, very good. Now, with that out of the way, why don't we find out a little bit about Michelle Bogdan, who you are, and why you're running for Oshkosh Common Council?
All right, well, I'm 21 years old, and I am a student at the UW here. And basically, why I'm running is I'm interested in public service, and that's what I'm gearing my life towards. And I would really like to help out people, give people a voice, work on public policy, and make this a better community for everybody.
Okay. One of the first things that we certainly want to address is garbage fees. I'm sure that you've been hearing an awful lot about this.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the Common Council voted a budget a few months back, which included removing the garbage pickup from the tax rolls, and now we're all going to get bills for this, you know, I guess, starting in October of this year.
Yeah.
How do you feel about the garbage fees? And, you know, what would you have done differently if you're opposed to them?
Right, well, you know, it's a mandatory $10 fee. You know, it's basically like a tax. Personally, I would have went about it a different way. I believe that we can do something better by getting a volume-based garbage, because then we can have more recycling, you know, we can get that out there, and then people aren't paying for other people's garbage, you know? Everybody has to pay the same fee, whether they're putting out one bag or 10. So I think we could help the situation out a little bit there and improve our community in the meanwhile.
Of course, that is a, I'm sorry, Tony, that, of course, would take lots of money to set up and probably more time than, you know, the few weeks or so that we had.
Yeah.
Do you think that there were other things that could have been done with respect to this current budget that would have, you know, put off the fees for at least a year, and yet still kept our budget somewhat intact without raising taxes?
Well, you know, the budget is really tight, and I know it's, you know, really hard to put money in different places, but I think we could look at the place where we're putting, you know, maybe a lot of money where we shouldn't, you know? And I think we could be putting less money in the huge things like the, you know, Five Rivers, although, you know, it's a good thing, it could bring in a lot of money, but we're putting a lot of money into it.
Well, if you were elected, would you move to repeal that garbage fee? Since it's not fair?
Yes, actually, I would move to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
But then we'd have to, again, but then Cheryl suggests we'd have to find the money from somewhere else, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And so you're suggesting that maybe on things like Five Rivers, there's too much, what's the problem with Five Rivers?
Well, we're putting millions in there right now, or we would be, and so far, I don't know, it just, it's a really big risky thing. We just have to be careful with how much we're putting into it, and how much they're going to be able to pay, and if they're going to be able to pay how much they said they would. There's a lot of gray area where that's concerned right now.
Okay.
As far as I'm aware.
Is it time to pull the plug on that project? Should the city tell the developer that this is not a good idea? He doesn't have his financing approved yet, he missed the deadline, as you know. So the fact that he missed his deadline, and we don't know when he's going to come up with the financing deal, should the city just say, forget it, pull the plug?
You know, I think it's, we should be very careful about it. I don't know if it's necessarily, you know, time to pull the plug, but we should really work with them closely and say, you know, maybe an ultimatum. If you don't come up with it at this point, then we're going to have to do something about it.
Okay, sure.
How do you feel about the fact that the City Council is now willing to, you know, extend that deadline yet again? I mean, I'm assuming, based on what you just said, that you're in favor of that, but I think that the sense of frustration with some of us today, as we sit here, is that this was a deadline put into place by our community development director, and apparently agreed to by the developer of the project. It was missed, and now we've got a community development director sort of backpedaling on his own memo, his own written words, saying, no, 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 that's not really what I meant.
Yeah.
How do you feel about that? Let's talk about that.
Well, I think it should make us a little more hesitant into going into the Five Rivers project. You know, it's very risky, and how much money we're putting into that, you know, we don't want to lose it, you know, after we've lost so much money over the Park Plaza and everything.
Right, okay.
What are you going to say to voters who are, you know, watching you and they're thinking, you know, you're a nice person, but you're 21 years old?
Right.
You just don't have the experience, the credentials, to make decisions on things like major economic development, like Five Rivers. How are you going to answer people who say that?
Well, you know, I think I've had a really good education thus far, and I'm getting more of it as we speak. And I feel I'm prepared. I've been involved in community things. I like to learn, you know, if there's something I don't know about, I will research it as much as I can. And I will not vote on something I do not know everything about, you know?
Another, a different issue. The Otter Street Fishing Club donated a pier that's going to be put in Miller's Bay.
Yeah.
The neighbors were, most of them, were very much against this. Do you think that pier should be put there?
Well, you know, I think there should have been a lot more inquiries as to how the public felt about this. The way it happened, I just don't think was right. There wasn't enough public input, there just wasn't enough time for people to react to this.
But should it be, but you're right, and we'll get to that, the process.
Right, okay.
But the process was the way it was, flawed.
Yes.
But should the pier be there?
You know, personally, I don't think so, because it is, you know, the last piece that there's nothing on, and I think we should leave that to be nice and natural without, you know, bringing in...
Okay, and then, so what about the process, then? It kind of got rushed through, it was approved on a Monday night by the Parks Board, council rubber stamped it on Tuesday. So what should the city be doing differently?
I think they should give the City Council a little bit more time to think about it. I think they should ask the community how they feel about the project, you know? Get a little bit more input before it's just rushed out there.
Okay.
There is a formal notification process in place in this community for other types of things. For example, I serve on the Board of Appeals. When someone wants to do something to their property that has the potential to affect neighbors, there is a policy in place where those neighbors who abut that property are notified. There does not seem to be, however, a formal policy in place with respect to parks projects and who gets notified there.
Right.
The City Council, Meredith Shireman, Councilwoman Shireman in particular, sort of grilled our Parks Director, Tom Stefani, on that issue, and he sort of stammered all over the place, trying to figure out how to answer the question of how he notifies people. After that long question or statement, do you feel that there should be a formal-type policy in place to notify neighbors of parks when a project is going to be done?
I think so, especially if it's affecting, you know, the neighbors as much as it would be with the pier out there. You know, I think that would help a lot more, we could, it'd be a lot more formal instead of just rushing it out there, I think. It's a very good idea.
Okay.
Okay. The Leach Amphitheater, currently, we, no surcharge is put on tickets, or facility fee, what do we call it?
Facility charge, facility fee.
Right. Should there be, should there be a user fee, we might call it? Should there be a fee like that on tickets?
Oh, yeah.
Why?
I think so, because, you know, people that want to use the amphitheater right now have to pay, you know, $1,500 to $2,000 just to use it.
Right.
And then they have to clean the bathrooms afterwards, you know? Such, you know, a minimal fee, I think, would be good to put in place for that.
Like, what will be minimal? How much?
Well, you know, I think it depends on the size of the event, I think, because, you know, if it's a smaller event, it'd be a little bit more...
A 50 cent fee, a dollar fee?
I think a 50 cent fee would be fine, you know?
Okay, okay. Go ahead.
So 50 cents per ticket, and, you know, should the city maintain control of that money then, or should it be put with the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation? Where, they have a Board of Directors who can say, no, we don't think that you should be entitled to this money for XYZ project that you want to spend it on?
Well, you know, I think it should go to the person that would be able to direct it better, I guess. I don't know much on it, but I think as long as, you know, the money's getting handled correctly, it's not going to the wrong places, it's, you know, going for use for what we're putting it out there for, as long as it's not getting used for other things.
What, okay, what new ideas do you bring to this campaign that other candidates do not or will not?
Well, I just have a lot of different ideas on how we can revitalize the downtown area.
Such as?
You know, I've seen the River Walk plans and everything. I think that, you know, it's a really good idea. I think it could bring a lot of people in. I think there are some alterations you could put in there, put a lot more trees, and a lot more greenery, a lot, make it more pretty, you know, down by the river. That's what people want to see, they want to be down there and have it look like a beautiful area, and not all cement, you know?
What about, you know, ideas for downtown redevelopment? I mean, what ideas would you have there?
I think, you know, we could put in more small businesses, help those people out that want to bring more culture into the area and that kind of thing. Like, I think the New Moon adds a lot, and the Water City Grill. I like those a lot, I think, you know, if we have more businesses like that, if we can get more events downtown, like the Art Gallery Walk, I mean, those are great things that are bringing people.
You are a student here. Do you have any ideas on how to get the campus more involved in the city?
Right, I think we could work a lot more with the Reeves Union Board, as far as like the Leach Amphitheater is concerned, and so we can get in a lot more acts that, you know, the university would be interested in, because, you know, however many students we got there, I mean, we could bring in a lot more business.
Sure.
For that, and the downtown area, bring a lot more students downtown. And I think we could talk to the students more, get more input on what they would like to see downtown.
Okay.
You know?
You know, in about the minute or so that we have left, what do you see as major issues facing this city in the next year or two?
Right, I think a lot of the basic needs of our citizens, because right now, I think everybody should have a living wage, you know, family sustaining income. I think we could deal with the needs of the garbage, obviously, there are some of the streets that are getting ignored that I think we can deal with, you know? I think, obviously, the budget's going to be a big issue, and I think we need to look at that and put the money in places where we absolutely need it. Look at the foundation of Oshkosh. If, you know, we can't keep our own citizens happy, we can't necessarily bring in a lot of outsiders.
Okay, all right, very good. Why don't you take about 30 seconds, Michelle, look into camera three, and tell the viewers why they should vote for Michelle Bogdan on Tuesday, February 21st.
All right, well, I think you should vote for me, because I bring a lot more new, refreshing ideas to the city, and I would like to do everything I can, put your voice out there, and try to make the community a better place.
All right. Do you have, you've got a blog site?
Correct.
A website for someone who doesn't know what a blog is. Why don't you quickly tell them what that is, how they can access it?
Okay, you can access it by going to http and all that, and the Michelle4Oshkosh, and that's number four, not the letters, and that's dot blogspot.com.
Or you can just click on it through oshkoshnews.org. You can access it through this website as well. So, Michelle, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for having me.
If you make it through the primary, we'll have you back again when, I swear to God, we'll have more time to talk to you.
Sounds good.
So thanks very much, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
And we're going to take a real short break. When we come back, we'll be joined by Larry Diddlow. Larry is a candidate for the Oshkosh Area Board of Education, and we will be right back to meet him.
We got our...
I escaped. I escaped. By foot.
Run across a border.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in forced labor camps.
If I stay in Cambodia, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write, your dad, you speak your mind, your dad?
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing, no money, no English.
America stood for freedom, it stands for freedom, and that's what all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You, too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-for-a-child. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her health care costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, health care referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Welcome back, and we are now joined, we're shifting gears just ever so slightly here. We are going to now be meeting and speaking with Larry Diddlow. Larry is making his second run for the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education. That's a mouthful to say in and of itself, but Larry, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule and a campaign to join us and talk about what you see as issues facing the Oshkosh Area School District. I know you ran last time. We didn't have a chance to interview you last year. We're glad you're here this year. Why don't you take a few moments and just tell folks, you know, a little bit about yourself and why you're running for the school board?
Okay, I think probably one reason I thought it'd be appropriate, since I'm taking, working toward a second master's at UWO in Curriculum and Instruction Department, to try to reconnect the classroom with, you might say, the school board or representatives. I know when I was overseas in Europe, teaching about 40 years ago, the, I was on an army dependence base, and they didn't have a school board. And I think, you know, that's something that you usually take for granted, and most people, I don't think, are very familiar with whom they're voting for. And I thought this was one area that, especially since I was a social studies teacher and language arts teacher, about half of my experience was at the junior high school level and the other at high school, but I thought this was an appropriate area that I might get more involved with. And I've also been involved with community activities, including EAA, Paint Arts Center and so forth, the last several years. And there are a lot of retired people, and I kind of fit in that category right now. But I do have a substitute credential still at the secondary level, and I have been a 317 reading specialist. So those are some of the areas of my interest, and I'm also interested in charter schools, which is a public school. This last semester, I took a course called Legal Aspects of Education, and it gave me some insight as to some of the court cases relative to educational policy. And I got kind of the other side of the story from the point of view of, not so much of a jury, but of a judge, working with parents who are dissatisfied with the school districts for some reason. And sometimes they win, and sometimes they lose, but I think sometimes this area usually is neglected in the undergraduate years. I was glad I had the opportunity to read about some of the court cases.
Where did you teach social studies?
In Los Angeles, two years, and Phoenix, Arizona.
All right.
And in Wurzburg, Germany, for a year in 1967, '68.
How long have you been in the Oshkosh area?
I've been here about 40 years. I've lived most of my life in Oshkosh, and I've been as a substitute in the Fox River Valley Schools for about 20 years.
I see. Now, what, Larry, in your opinion, is wrong with the current school board? What are they not doing that you feel we need some new blood on the board?
Well, I'm not too sure they're addressing the problems, maybe of overcrowding in the high school and maybe at Perry Tipler. I know this involves, for example, cost effectiveness, accountability. And we don't like to say we have to build a new school or something. But I think possibly if they address the situation, maybe through charter schools, or maybe constructing a science math wing at Oshkosh North High School, or to eliminate possibly future overcrowding. I studied the enrollment figures last year, and they don't seem too much of a problem. It's hard to pinpoint them exactly, but I think we need a study for restructuring.
Okay, well, part of the problem, I'm sure you would agree, is that we haven't changed our boundaries in a long time.
That could be one area, too.
What is your view on changing boundaries?
This would be one area to study.
How should, how should that happen? Should it, this current board seems to like to put together large committees that talk things to death. Is your view of educational reform that we need to put large committees of stakeholders together? Or do you think this, the seven members of the board superintendent should make this decision? Or is there another way to do it?
Well, it did say in the paper that Oshkosh West was experiencing overcrowding.
Sure.
And I'm not too sure the boundary lines. You're still going to have those excess students, whether you put them in north or west, you know?
Right. But I mean, do you think, Larry, should we, like, talk things to death so that no one gets upset? Or at some point, does this board have to make a decision? And, you know, people are going to be unhappy with boundary changes. If you're on the school board, will you make votes? Will you vote for things that you know will get people upset with you?
If I believe I'm speaking for the parent involved, the typical parent, and student, meeting the students' needs.
All right. Because boundaries is one of those issues. The moment you try and change boundaries, someone is going to be very mad.
Well, same thing with building, you know, and more taxes, you know?
Yeah, but you don't, you don't mind making parents mad every now and then if you have to?
No, no, I think...
Because is your guiding criteria the good of the district?
The majority, and you have to do the same thing in the classroom. And sometimes you have to step on people's toes to get, do the right thing.
And you're willing to do that?
Yes.
All right.
Well, Larry, one of the things that has made parents in this district quite upset, at least some of them, has been a change in the calendar, i.e., early release, and different release times at different times of the week or month. That is, they've done that now twice, once in this current school year and once in the preceding. And they're talking about perhaps doing it again. How do you feel about the early release and the way it's been done with respect to the school calendar for collaboration purposes?
Well, as I under, they did that when I went to high school at the old city hall. When I was there in 1958, which is a long time ago, but it was about the era of Bill Steiger, you might say. But if you got a certain grade point, you know, above a B or a B-plus, then you could go home an hour early, you know? And this might be another way to eliminate the overcrowding, too. And also, maybe open up classes for appropriate students at the high school level at the university.
Okay, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't explain it real well. But basically, what they're doing, and I don't have kids in the district, so it hasn't affected me one way or the other. But from what I understand is that in order for them, for the teachers to have collaboration time, certain days, they may release kids 20 minutes or 15 minutes earlier than they do...
Oh, it's not individual students.
Right, it's by grade levels. So they're releasing them at different times on different days so that they can have collaboration time, what they call collaboration time. And so you've got daycare issues and other types of childcare issues that sort of stagger depending on the day of the week. How do you feel about that?
Well, I think it seems to be okay from a teacher's viewpoint, as long as they're not getting involved with other problems. But it's difficult, teachers don't have enough time to do their job in the first place.
Right.
And I think they, they need to talk to one another. And they are meeting the students' needs and the parents' needs, just like PTA, for example, at seventh grade, having the parents come forward and inquire about the students, especially at that critical age. And also, maybe a volleyball game at ninth grade level or something with PTA, you know?
Larry, a different topic. There's three incumbents running, as you know, Mr. Becker, Mrs. Weinshine, and Mr. Kavanaugh. Are you running against the incumbents?
Well, I'm just running for the vacancies. I don't, I really don't know them that well. I bet some at the North High School.
But if the incumbents were doing a great job, you probably wouldn't be running, right?
Yes, I, I'm, I think my, I think my voice might speak more for, maybe from the, see, I'm single. But I've been in the classroom, and I could possibly meet the students' needs and teachers' needs better than maybe some of the incumbents.
Because you've...
Because of my experience.
Because you've been a teacher.
Yeah.
So you lend a different kind of experience to that?
Possibly, yeah. A different perspective, maybe, in some, not in all cases, but for solutions.
Sure.
The school board has entertained this idea of doing a study, yet another study. We never seem to do enough of those in this community. To, it's a study on public relations and how to better connect, if you will, with the parents in this district. They've also entertained the idea of hiring a public relations person after they just a few years ago did away with a public relations position. How do you feel about those ideas?
Well, I think, for example, working with parent-teacher groups, you don't necessarily have to go through public relations, but group, but, again, I would, I don't feel that informed to have a reasonable perception at this time. So probably, it's hard for me to respond.
All right.
Okay, do we have enough?
Sure, go ahead.
Time for one more question. What is your view of Dr. Heilmann, the superintendent? Is he doing a good job in this area?
Well, I, last year, I received about six different large envelopes at my post office address. And they were helpful, for example, in enrollment figures, and, for example, in understanding some of the perspectives, visions, whatever, about English second language, bilingual activities. And I think his office was responsible for that, and you read about him in the paper.
Yeah.
He seems to be doing what's expected of him. I'm not too sure about the overcrowding issue, but that's not his...
Well, you're a teacher. If you had to give him a letter grade, A, B?
A B-plus.
A B-plus?
Right.
All right, I'm sure you'd be happy to hear that. I'd be happy with a B-plus.
I met him at the Spanbauer...
Give us my student evaluations, I'd be happy with a B-plus.
I met him at the Spanbauer Aviation Center last year when we were giving the kind of report.
There's talk, Larry, about a four-year-old kindergarten program in Oshkosh. Just real quickly, how do you feel about that?
Well, that's one of the courses. I'm taking preschool administration organization next semester, and I probably will be more informed after I take that course. But I think it's a healthy sign, and I think we're also entitled to federal and state grants through that program, and I would encourage it, yeah.
Okay, very good. Why don't you take about 30 seconds? Look into camera three, Larry, if you would please, and tell folks why they should go to the polls and vote for you on Tuesday, February 21st.
Well, in my opinion, I think I can bring more of a balanced perspective to the board. I'm a little older than the average member. And with my experience, not only as a community volunteer, but also as a teacher in the classroom for the last over 20 years, I think that gives me an advantage in possibly making more in-depth decisions.
All right, very good. Well, thank you much for being here. We appreciate it, and we'll have you back if you, if you make it through the primary. And then we'll have more time to really chat with you and get into more issues. So good luck on February 21st. Toni, thank you. And as always, thank you for letting us into your home for the last hour. Please go to the polls on Tuesday, February 21st, and vote for the candidates of your choice. We will see you next time. Until then, take good care. Keep your eye on us. We've got our eye on Oshkosh.